Good evening, everyone. I'd ask that you please rise as we ask Pastor Duane Smith to lead us in our invocation, all by the Pledge of Legions.
Heavenly Father, we recognize your presence. We recognize that the Lord is our shepherd we shall not want. Father, tonight I pray we not want in your favor. We not lack in your wisdom, in your direction. We not want or lack in your knowledge and bring about your favor upon this community, prosperity, and your faithfulness. We love you tonight, but we are loved more by you. We thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30, February 7, 2022, and we'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 And we have a quorum. First item this evening we will look at is the approval of the agenda. I'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremse. Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. Hope everyone's well. Say, we do have one item to remove from the agenda this evening. That's item number four on the consent agenda. We will be bringing that item back at our council meeting on the 22nd in a few weeks here. And then, just to rearrange a little bit under ordinances and resolutions, I ask that we bring number seven, the resolution adopting the bike and ped master plan, to the top of the list. And we'll do that first.
All right. With that, I would look for a motion adopting the agenda as amended.
Approve, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Krista. I'm in favor of that motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening. Under a wording of bids, tonight we will need a resolution awarding the tree removal and tree trimming services contract for 2022 and 2023 to Cars Tree Service. And we'll call on our Public Works Director, Guy Taylor. Good evening, Guy.
Good evening. Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be looking for that resolution, the recommendation of Cars Tree Service to be our tree contractor for years 2022 and 2023. Our city forester, Andy Nelson, works very closely with the tree contractor. Cars has been our contractor now for the last six years, and they've done excellent work for us. They remove all the trees that Andy marks that are diseased with Dutch elm disease, and then they do some tree trimming services for us as well. The amount budgeted for tree services this year is $135,000. We're looking to add $5,300 in from unspent budget money from last year. So getting that up to 140 or so, and hopefully getting through one of our areas that we have. We have five different areas mapped out for trimming each year, and so we'll hopefully get a good segment of that done this year. So recommending that contract to Cars for two years.
Thank you, Guy. We can do that by resolution. Someone like to offer that? Thank you, Brent.
I will.
Thank you, Anthony. Second, questions for Guy? Roll call, please.
Gustafson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish. Yes.
Egbert. Yes.
Bobby. Yes.
Rupert. Yes. Thompson. Yes.
That resolution is approved. Under petitions and communications, this evening, we have two proclamations to read, and I'm excited to read them both. First is a proclamation declaring March and April 2022 as the Big Read Community Reading Program for the City of Fergus Falls. And I'll read this proclamation from the Fergus Falls Library and their staff. Whereas reading for enjoyment and enlightenment can enrich the lives of individuals, and whereas reading is a cornerstone of education for people of all ages, and whereas democracy needs an informed citizenry and reading is critical to that purpose, and whereas a community-wide reading event can encourage the love of reading and growth of understanding, and whereas the National Endowment for the Arts in partnership with Arts Midwest and the Fergus Falls Public Library have chosen to participate, the Big Read with Tai Wu's book, "The Best We Could Do," an illustrated memoir of a family's experience leaving war-torn Vietnam to make a new life in the United States. And whereas such a reading program can bring people of diverse backgrounds and viewpoints together through the shared experience of reading, discussing, and exploring the same book, now therefore I, Ben Shire, the mayor of the City of Fergus Falls, do hereby proclaim March and April of 2022 as the Big Read Community Reading Program for the City of Fergus Falls, and I encourage all citizens to become involved by reading "The Best We Could Do" and by participating in community activities related to that reading program. Thank you very much. We have a video that we'll show. Thank you, Gail, to you and all of your staff for everything you do for the community, and thanks to Ariel for putting that video together for us as well. Gail, did you want to? Please do.
Thank you, Mayor and councilpeople. The Fergus Falls community has a long history of participation in the National Endowment for the Arts Big Read Program. Some of you probably remember previous programs featuring the Maltese Falcon or the Joy Luck Club by Amy Tan, and we're excited to have the program back in Fergus Falls again this spring of 2022. And tonight with me, I have Amanda Callahan and Beth Richardson from the Cadets Galleries, and they also have a really short video that we would like to show you introducing two really amazing exhibits that are going to be at the Cadets as part of this program. The Big Reads program allows us to collaborate with other community organizations and other community businesses, and we have forged some really strong partnerships during this process. There's many ways for people to participate in this event. There are companion reads for younger children. There'll be art classes, art exhibits, there'll be speakers, so some good opportunities to participate. This is an opportunity for us to come together through literature to gain greater understanding of one another in the world around us. So thank you for your support, and we'll have a few free books to give away at the end of the meeting, so.
Thanks, Gail.
Very pleased to partner with the Fergus Falls Public Library on this wonderful NEA Big Read project. We've selected two exhibitions that feature quite different perspectives on the Vietnam War and the fall or liberation of Saigon. Currently at Cadets Galleries is "Texture's of Remembrance: Vietnamese Artists and Writers Reflect on the Vietnamese Diaspora." We are proud to be the first stop on this exhibition's tour. It is a powerful and moving exploration of the Vietnamese refugee experience. As the introduction to the exhibition states, "April 30, 1975 holds significant meaning for Vietnamese people on different shores. This date marks the end of decades of war and the beginning of the displacement of hundreds of thousands of Vietnamese. It is a date often remembered as a loss by those of South Vietnamese descent. For others, it is a date that demands new beginnings. Such experiences may be harrowing, joyous, inspiring, tragic, or tender, but they are rarely shared or heard. Texture's of Remembrance will be on display at Cadets Galleries now until Saturday, March 12. Beginning March 24, Cadets Galleries brings "Nam: Now a Memory" back to our area. Created by Pelican Rapids artist and Vietnam War veteran Jim Fletcher, the pieces in this exhibition are a visual portrayal of his memories of the Vietnam War. As the exhibition notes, these images are neither intending to criticize nor dramatize the American involvement in Vietnam. There is no political statement, chronological succession, or plot. This exhibit has been shown throughout the U.S. and has opened eyes for many to the realities, hardships, and horrors of war, removing the false facade of glory. "Nam: Now a Memory" will be on display at Cadets Galleries from March 24 to May 28. We hope you visit Cadets Galleries in downtown Fergus Falls to see these two powerful exhibitions. If you can't make it in person, you can also visit our website, cadetsgalleries.org, to view the virtual tours.
Thank you, Gail. Thank you to the Cadets for your partnership as well. Thank you. Second proclamation we have tonight is proclamation declaring February 10, 2022 as Giving Hearts Day, and I'll read this proclamation as well. And then we have a video, and we have some representatives from the different organizations with us this evening as well. Whereas Giving Hearts Day was started in 2008 by Dakota Medical Foundation and Impact Foundation as the first 24-hour regional event of its kind, with Alex Stern Family Foundation joining them as a co-host in 2014. And whereas Giving Hearts Day is a gateway for citizens to connect to charitable organizations through important work improving health and quality of life across our state, and whereas Dakota Medical Foundation, Impact Foundation, and Alex Stern Family Foundation jointly support the Impact Institute to dramatically improve fundraising efforts of nonprofit organizations by equipping them with data-driven resources, training, and coaching. And whereas last year, more than 42,000 caring donors gave $22 million on Giving Hearts Day, and since its inception, Giving Hearts Day has raised more than $112 million to support regional charities. And whereas Giving Hearts Day 2022 includes nearly 550 nonprofits and charitable funds spans the entire state of North Dakota and Northwest Minnesota, and includes seven nonprofit organizations in our own city of Fergus Falls, which are Inspiration Point, Freedom Resource Center, Health Resources Center, LB Homes, A Wife Like Me, Lutheran Brethren Seminary, and the Lake Region Healthcare Foundation, as well as additional organizations with local representatives. And whereas our Giving Hearts 2022 goal is to inspire more than 50,000 giving hearts to support charity on Giving Hearts Day, many of whom get to experience the joy of giving for the first time, making us the most generous region on the planet. Now therefore, I, as the mayor of the City of Fergus Falls, do hereby proclaim February 10, 2022 to be Giving Hearts Day in the City of Fergus Falls. And we thank you for your -- to be here this evening. We have a video, I believe, you want to show now, and then Amanda, Aaron, and Lee are with us. If you'd like to come up and say a few words, you're welcome to do that as well.
Hi, this is Ben Shire, mayor of Fergus Falls, and I'm excited about February 10 in our community. It's Giving Hearts Day, which is a 24-hour online fundraising event where seven local charities are raising money to do the important work that they do in our communities. So let's hear from each of those organizations about how your donations on February 10 to Giving Hearts Day will make a lasting impact to those in our community. Thank you. Thank you for considering your gift to Giving Hearts Day this year. Your gift will help Inspiration Point continue to provide time and space so that people encounter and follow Christ. Your gift this year is going to help us in three areas. First of all, providing a surface under a brand-new playground. Secondly, adding water and electricity to an area that will become our winter recreation hub and a place for campers and RVs in the summertime. And finally, in replenishing our scholarship fund so that no child, no youth, nobody has to say that they can't attend camp because they can't afford it. Thank you so much.
The mission of A Wife Like Me is to build strong, healthy, Christ-centered marriages. Donations given to A Wife Like Me on Giving Hearts Day will go to our new teacher family fund, a scholarship fund for wives who are teachers or who are married to a teacher. Help us provide access to our marriage-transforming resources and coaching services to teaching families at no cost. Make a difference and be a light in your community with your donation to A Wife Like Me. Hi, I'm Erin Tisby with Health Resources Center, located downtown Fergus Falls. At HRC, we come alongside individuals and families and offer one-on-one mentorship and resources in the areas of parenting and pregnancy, life coaching, and sexual health. Your Giving Hearts Day donations this year will help fund and support our Beating Heart Services, pregnancy testing, preloaded vitamins, first trimester ultrasounds, parenting classes, pregnancy classes, and childbirth prep. These free confidential services help equip women in our community to thrive in parenting and pregnancy. You can learn more about our Beating Heart Services at hrcff.org. Freedom Resource Center serves all individuals, all ages, with all types of disabilities, free of charge. We have many programs that we offer to individuals. Today, I am here to inform you about one particular service that we do offer. It is called our Ramp It Up program. Our temporary ramp program helps people get home. Imagine you or a family member finds themselves in a situation that affects their mobility issues, leading them unable to get into or exit their home. Freedom Resource Center is able to come into your home and install a ramp, a temporary ramp, free of charge for you. If you find that you do need more of a permanent ramp, we do have financial resources to give you this permanent ramp that is needed. Remember, all of our services are free. Giving Hearts Day funds will be used to purchase more ramps so that we can serve more individuals in our area. Please remember Giving Hearts Day and Ramp It Up.
Hi there. My name is Caleb Larson, and I'm the director of Foundation and Missions at LB Homes. This year, for Giving Hearts Day, we're raising funds to update the audio and visual equipment in Light &amp; Life Auditorium, where our residents gather for activities, special events, and worship services. This updated equipment will be able to not only provide clearer audio for our residents with hearing needs, but will also allow us to better capture and accommodate worship services, special events, and activities for those who otherwise might not be able to attend. Please remember LB Homes this Giving Hearts Day.
Hello, I'm Amy Allen with the Lake Region Healthcare Foundation. We are committed to supporting the work of improving the health and well-being of our patients and local community members. Gifts made through Giving Hearts Day will help us build a healthcare education fund to provide scholarships for staff to attain continuing education and earn higher-level certifications and licenses. The fund supports healthcare workers at every level, from nurses, doctors, computer scientists, and maintenance engineers, to laboratory and radiation technicians, patient navigators, and advanced practice professionals. By advancing the quality of our healthcare team expertise, we are also enhancing the quality of care we provide.
Hi, I'm Steve Tonison. The Lutheran Brethren Seminary was established in 1903 and relocated to Fergus Falls in 1935. It is a seminary for the Church and Lutheran brother, where pastors, missionaries, and laypeople can come to get training and share the gospel of Jesus with people in North America and all around the world. Giving Hearts Day donations help us elevate the cost of seminary so that we can help your tuition more affordable for those that attend. Thank you for your support.
We just want to say thank you for your support, Mayor Ben, and for the city council for year after year, supporting us as seven nonprofits together and just making our community a better place. So, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron Lee, Amanda. Thanks for the work that all the organizations do for our community, so, thank you. Moving along to the consent agenda tonight. Item number four, as a reminder, has been removed. That leaves 10 items on the consent agenda. If anyone would like to talk about any of those individually, we will remove them. Hearing none, I would entertain a resolution passing the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that resolution.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, we're going to skip around a little bit here. So first item we're going to look at is item number seven, which is a resolution adopting the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, and we'll call on our city planner, Ms. Karen Flom. Good evening, Karen.
Good evening, Your Honor, and thank you, and good evening, council members. This bicycle and pedestrian master plan, the council previously had a presentation from the project consultant during a January committee of the whole meeting. Just as a summary, this has been a planning effort that's been ongoing since the summer of 2020, which means that the engagement has mostly had to be virtual. So that has been a combination of online surveys, there was an interactive map that people were able to engage in, as well as two virtual facilitated group sessions that were led to the comments that informed the plan. So broadly, this is a 10-year plan, which makes recommendations on evaluating the existing network of bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and making recommendations for improvements over that time period. We did have a public comment period that was open on the draft plan from December 27 through January 27, and of course, the other public engagement activities before then. So we are looking for council to adopt a resolution adopting that master plan this evening. If there's any last-minute questions or discussion, happy to answer any questions that may still be. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Justin. Second, any questions, comments for Karen before we call for the vote? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. That resolution is approved. Back to the first item on the agenda, which is the second reading of ordinance 22 relating to animals. This has been committee. It's had its first reading. If anyone has any questions, we will direct them to our city attorney. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That ordinance is approved. Item number two is dealing with the franchise fee discussion that we've had for the past several months, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremse. Good evening again, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. Once again, it's good to see you. As you all recall, last Wednesday, we had an extensive discussion on this. I just have a few comments I would like to make. As each of you know, the number one issue that we all hear about is the condition of our streets. I think that's a common topic that we all hear about throughout the community, and we certainly do on a day-to-day basis. And as a result of that discussion, we've been discussing franchise fees as an option to address some of these issues related to our streets since 2019. It is just that. It's an option. It's a solution that is commonly used in other communities, and it's a solution that we have at our disposal here in Fergus Falls as well, if we choose to do that. However, after a lot of discussion over the last few days and over the last few weeks, and receiving feedback from the community, discussing this with some of you on the council, the mayor, business owners, and other members of our community, I stand before you this evening to say I don't feel the timing of this discussion is real good. Quite frankly, I think the discussion has merit, but the timing is problematic. I don't believe it's going to receive any traction in the community, given the current economic climate and economic factors that we see in our community and nationwide. And as a result of that, I'm making the recommendation this evening to table the discussion, send it back to the tax levy committee, and if that committee feels that it's appropriate to revisit this down the road, they can do so. But for now, it's staff's recommendation that we halt the discussion for now. The timing is not well or appropriate. It just happened to work out that way after a long process and a lot of work that we've put into this since first discussing it in 2019. So if the council wants to proceed, we certainly can do that, but it's staff recommendation at this time to lay this on the table and see if there's a more appropriate time to have the discussion.
Thank you, Andrew. Jim and Manta.
I would make the motion to lay it on the table.
Thank you.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Second, so we have a motion to the table and a second discussion?
I think, as you say, it is a fair and just kind of program. It's just, I think, maybe the amount we're looking at is too great overall, and I think that, you know, whichever way we want to look at it, I think the perception is it's a tax in a different form, and I think it's the right thing to do is to table it and push it back to the tax levy committee.
Yeah, certainly. I would agree with that. I think when we started this, as Andrew's mentioned, as we've talked about, the intent is to find ways to fund our streets, to improve our streets, to look at different funding. Yeah, not to disguise it as anything other than, you know, a revenue source that would be passed on to the consumers. But when the discussion started, we didn't have, you know, 80% plus increases in natural gas and in heat, fuel, oil, and there's a lot of pressures right now on consumers that, you know, that they're there, that they are, and I think that, I know I've heard from that, I know some other people have as well. So I appreciate your words, Andrew and Anthony, Tom. Yes?
Yeah, and if I could just make a couple of quick points, you know, to get it out, I would really encourage people to get educated on the issue. From the comments that I've received, and I try to stay off of Facebook, but I do go and look at the comments sometimes, and I think a lot of people just don't understand the issue because, you know, complaints about the roads are almost the only thing I get as far as feedback. And so, I mean, really what people need to understand is that if we're going to keep continuing to complain about the roads, then we need to pay for it somehow. I mean, we live in the most inhospitable climate for building roads there is, and if we want better roads, we have to pay for it somehow. So I just, you know, I would tell people to look elsewhere than social media for their information, you know, look at city government sites, you know, many, many, many other cities. We're one of the few cities in the state of our size that doesn't have a fee like this, and this would create a dedicated funding source for repairing the roads that we hear about all the time. So if anybody's got a better idea on a way to do it, I'm all ears, but I just encourage people to educate yourself somewhere other than social media.
Thanks, Tom. And I would just say, too, I think it's the start of a good discussion. I'd like to thank staff, you know, for the information. They've spent a lot of time in this. Bring it back to the tax levy committee, and we'll continue the discussion because we all want to fix the roads. We all want to find the right way to fix the roads that's reasonable and acceptable to the public. Scott?
I would agree with Anthony, and to a degree even with Tom, that I think that the direction that we're looking, you know, to try and find a way to pay for what needs to be paid for is good. And so I'm looking forward to this conversation, you know, continuing, even though it won't likely go any further tonight. One of the questions that I asked Bill earlier, just so that people could get a sense of the dollars and cents of this, we were looking to pick up about $1 million this year from this, and we were expecting to use that money and do some roadwork even this year if the process would have gone along. So people will now be able to not see some roadwork get done that we might have otherwise done this year, and that'll be a consequence of this not going forward at this time. But then, what would have happened had you had a $50 increase in your utility bill for franchise fees? If you were to compare that, or how we would raise that $1 million otherwise would be through the tax levy, maybe you would have had that $1 million otherwise would be through the tax levy, maybe you would have had a $150 increase in your taxes to give, you know, for the city to get that same $1 million. And so, this mechanism isn't necessarily a bad mechanism. As Tom said, we need to understand it well. And for users, particularly larger businesses that have got higher dollar amounts where it's a pretty big hit, there's some things that we really need to sort out, you know. For someone who's got a $50 a year increase, it maybe doesn't sound like much. But for a larger business that might have a $10,000 increase, that's a big pill to swallow. So, we can understand where, you know, that's got to get sorted out a bit, and we need to understand that better. I don't mind the idea of tabling this, though, and look forward to finding a way to, next year, have more money in our street department budget.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Justin?
Well, maybe just add, I don't disagree with the discussion and appreciate the discussion to get more information out to the general public. The only thing I would maybe ask is, you know, it seems like when, you know, we've talked about this, and we're privy to being in the meetings, whereas the general public maybe doesn't have the ability to be at all the discussions. But, you know, when the tax levy brings it back forth, maybe give a little more time. As a council member, getting, you know, a lot of conversations from Wednesday to Monday and trying to digest it all versus maybe giving the public more time, us more time to relay and educate the public, you know. So, when this dumps come back through, if it does, you know, if we could somehow strategically align that so we have more time, that would be a good thing.
Sure. Thanks, Justin. Tom?
If I could just climb back on my soapbox for just another 30 seconds. You know, I said if anybody has any other ideas, I'm all ears. But I'm not open to the idea of cutting spending on other things in order to just have nice roads. Because if we don't make responsible investments in our community that are going to make this a better place for, you know, families for generations and give people reasons to come here and to live here and to work here and to spend their money here, I'm really not interested in those solutions. Because I think that we use the taxpayer funds that we're trusted with very responsibly, and our city finance department does a fabulous job of, I don't think that wasteful spending exists, you know. So, we need to still make those investments in the future of our community, just like Detroit Lakes is doing, just like Alexandria is doing, and just like Morehead is doing, if we want to stay competitive and stay a thriving regional center. So, those are ideas that I'm not interested in hearing because we need to make those investments. So, okay, I'm done for a while.
All right. Thanks, Tom. So, we have a motion to table, a second, and to send it back to the tax levy committee for some further discussion and to bring forth at some point in the future. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. That motion carries. I know there were some people in the audience that were probably here to speak on this issue. We've just tabled the discussion. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add to this discussion at this point? Okay, we're good. All right. Thank you. I just want to make sure. I know. Appreciate when people come to the meetings, and I want to give them an opportunity to voice their opinions. Okay. Item number three is a resolution accepting the second addition to Pebble Hills Estate 100% petition and initiating public improvement 8231 and ordering the preliminary engineering report. Brian, we'll call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro.
Yes, thank you, your honor, and good evening, and members of the council.
Good evening.
Yeah, this petition was presented to you at the last committee hall. This is a petition for the water main improvement on a proposed plat subdivision referred to as a second addition to Pebble Hills Estate. This water main we're proposing is associated with this project and has existing sewer and everything. So, primarily, the main infrastructure not installed right now is the water main. So, at this time, I'm requesting a resolution to initiate this project, accept a petition for this project, and also to order in the preliminary engineering report.
Thank you, Brian. Someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that resolution, your honor.
Thank you. Jim?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Anthony? Any questions for Brian? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 My fault. I'm going to abstain from this one.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. For the record, that resolution was offered by council member Fish and seconded by council member Anthony Hicks. We have someone watching that's taking minutes, so I just need to make sure that I announce who's making and seconding the motions for that individual. Item number four is a resolution authorizing entering into a contract with Arthur J. Gallagher for $23,000 to complete a wage and compensation study and to allow for the 2022 budget adjustments to pay for this study. And we'll call our human resources director, Mike. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Tonight, we come before you requesting this approval going forward, and there's several reasons why. The last time the city did a compensation study was in 2001. Also, this past summer, the county did a very in-depth compensation study with Arthur J. Gallagher, which revealed that several key areas of challenges that the county has for staffing were behind market as far as compensation and pay. And we have a very similar situation here with our current staff and various departments in the city. We've always kept up through cost of living adjustments, but I think at this point, we really need to look at where we're at from an analytical study and one that is validated through a third party like A.J. Gallagher rather than myself doing it. So, I'm here to request the $23,000 to spend for that service. There's a list of all the things that we would get for that, that type of money that I've provided you. And again, the key point is that it's a validated study, which allows us to look at our total compensation across the city and make appropriate changes. The question is, how do we pay for that? I've outlined that we would use $4,600 through those various funds. So, it'd be Fund 101, 608, 609, 610, 611. And so, part of this ask is also to our finance director to make those changes appropriately to this year's budget. Questions?
Thank you, Mike. Questions for Mike?
Yes.
Someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer it.
Thank you, Caroline.
Second half?
Second from Tom Ruffer. Go ahead, Scott.
Are there any opportunities for us to get some help with this study through either the League of Minnesota Cities or the, what's the other one? CEMG?
Coalition in Greater Minnesota.
Coalition in Greater Minnesota Cities. Can either one of those organizations help us with this kind of thing?
What they can offer is their independent data. The problem is their data is not validated. So, with having bargaining units that we have, our liver groups, we want to have a validated study so that they can't, they cannot be concerned that potentially we don't have valid data. So, there's this third party through A.J. Gallagher. This is their specialization. They're also the group that did our DBM study, actual banding and rating back in 2001. And they're also the group that did the counties. So, they're actually offering us about a $20,000 discount because they've done a lot of the lifting this last year for the county. So, they're able to use a lot of that data to get us to where we need to be.
Thank you. Question?
So, do we have a copy of the county's report?
We do. The challenge with that is the majority of this work is going to be validating, verifying our job descriptions. So, the county has job descriptions that are similar to ours, but they're not exactly equal. So, part of this study is to sort through what is similar, what is not similar, and then make sure that they're properly weighted as far as coming up at the compensation level. So, they're able to use some of it, not all of it. Any other questions?
One last, or another question?
Yeah, just a follow-up, I guess. As far as the timing of it, is this something that would be really critical to happen today, or is this something that we could budget for in our next budget cycle for next year?
It's a very good question. I feel it's important to start this process now. And the reason I suggest that is that when the county made their shift, they were looking to raise the increase wages after contract. Terms were up, but there was a lot of internal movement going on with the bargaining units. So, what they did is they made that change now. And so, we're behind in several key areas. One is our law enforcement partners. The other one is some of our lower bands in our utility positions. So, our fear is that we will have some of our intellectual knowledge get sold off, basically. In other words, meaning whenever we see a wage disparity that occurs $3 to $4 to $5 in position, we typically have people leave to the county. So, we want to make sure we don't have that happen here throughout this summer and throughout next year. So, we would start this process. We would work with Bill and the budget committee this summer to see what changes we have to make, if any.
Yeah, your honor, I was just going to add what Mike just said. The timing now allows us to be done in time for the next budgeting cycle, and it allows us to be strategic in how, assuming that there are identified increases, we don't know that until we do the work. But assuming that there are, it would allow us to strategically implement, whether it be stepping it in or, you know, doing it overnight or waiting till the contracts are due. I think there's some strategy involved there, some conversations that have to happen. We would have that information and time to make those decisions as part of the 2023 budget then. We'd be another year behind if we waited until those funds could be budgeted next year. So, yes.
As was a quick, what would be the duration of this study?
Four months.
Four months.
So, we have it by the time the tax levy meets, and like you said, where you start making some of those decisions. So, we have a motion, I'm sorry, we have a resolution offered by council member Gustafson, seconded by council member Ruffer. Any further questions for Mike before we call for the roll? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Rupert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Artisan?
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item number five is a resolution authorizing the transfer of real estate located at 522 East Hampton Avenue to the city and approving the quit claim deed. And we'll call on our city attorney, Rolf Nicomal.
Thank you, your honor. This is a problem property in town. Our building inspector approached the property owner who's under conservatorship and talked to their conservator about donating the property to the city so the city can come in there and tear the building down. So, but if you would like the city to acquire this problem property, tear down the building, then you should accept the donation, and this will become property of the city, and it will be demolished. And I'm assuming then April will try to get it sold to a adjoining property owner or whatnot to try to defray costs. But it removes a problem property in town.
Thank you, Rolf. Someone like to offer a resolution?
I'll make that, your honor.
Anthony, thank you. Anthony with the resolution, Brent with the second. And just a, Bill, we still have funds budgeted for problem properties, and assuming that we're going to run into these issues throughout the year, correct?
We do. We didn't budget a lot for this year. I'm trying to remember. Guy, is it like $10,000?
$10,000, I was going to say.
We carried forward the prior years, maybe $40,000. And the good news is, if we get things cleaned up and sold, we've actually done okay
Sure.
on these properties over here, at least.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. But like you said, Rolf, this takes care of one more problem property. So, Scott, yes?
As far as the definition of problem property, we're talking something that's dilapidated, unsafe, or is it behind on taxes, or both?
Hazard property.
Hazard.
And so, as far as any delinquency for utilities, taxes, anything like that, is that an issue in this, or not at all?
I believe everything's correct.
So, it would just be the dilapidated property being dealt with?
Public safety hazard, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks. Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Artisan?
Yes.
That resolution is approved. The final item on the ordinance and resolutions is a resolution approving a letter of intent and authorizing the drafting of a purchase agreement for the Roosevelt Chiller system from the Fergus Falls Public Schools. And we'll welcome our finance director, Bill Sommer. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, your honor, city council. We talked about this last Wednesday morning about the chiller. Right now, the city and the school share the chiller. We're actually on the school's chiller system. That's how we create ice. The school is looking at putting in a new chilling system for their buildings, and their buildings only. It wouldn't be the type of chiller that you would make ice with. So, thus, they've approached us, and would we want to purchase the existing chiller that is made to create ice? So, one of the benefits would be we could be assured to make ice in extended seasons in the summer. In other words, it could go year-round. That chiller would have that capability. The price tag on that is $575,000. They had looked at a range of what would that chiller be worth as it stands, and this is right in the middle of that range. That's where that was arrived at. And then, just before the meeting, Guy shared with me, in that letter of intent, you'll see that we would split the cost for separating that chiller. And so, split that 50/50 with the school and the city. The total of that would be $165,000 estimate. So, our half would be $82,500. So, bringing that 575 up to 657,500. So, about $658,000 is what the estimate we have right now for purchasing that chiller and paying half of the separation costs on that. Do I have that right, Guy?
Yep.
Okay. Funding for this, we have $1.1 million in the bank, dates back from when we built the facility. So, we'd be paying cash for that would be our funding source. So, I'll stop there. If you have any questions, I know we did discuss that Wednesday morning as well.
Discussed it at length Wednesday morning, yes, Justin?
Yeah, maybe just a quick question. I know we had discussed in the letter of intent making have a specified date when the city have operation for ice for the fall. Is that something we'll, you still want to add that date, or how?
Well, and Andrew, correct me if I am wrong. This letter of intent, and you'd be authorizing us to get working on a purchase agreement, and I think we could put all that in the purchase agreement. Would you agree with that?
Yes, and it will come back before you for approval as well.
Yep.
And I will offer that resolution so we can discuss it.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Jim. Someone like second? Caroline, second. Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Caroline.
My apologies.
No problem. No problem. Any further questions that weren't answered either this evening or Wednesday morning when we discuss this at length?
And again, we'll come back to you with a purchase agreement that you'll act on that.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $4,341,750.99. And if there are any questions, we will direct them to our city finance director.
I will offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you. Krista? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
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 Thompson?
Yes.
Artisan?
Yes.
That resolution is approved. There are no board committee department reports or reports from staff or administrative officers. Under old unfinished business, we have two items this evening. The first is public improvement 5958, which is dealing with the campus view estates sidewalk design. And again, we'll call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro.
Thank you. Good evening, your honor, and members again. I have a modified, last week, presented this as new business to the committee. This is regards to side block locations for the campus view development. The exhibit I did have, I took a moment here to make a little bit more useful, larger, better, hopefully better understand what the current layout for this development is. I just want to point out, I'm looking at the screen to the north here. I'm sorry, the pointer must not be. There we go. Looking at the screen to the north here, you can see the undeveloped property, it provided lines and everything. We have Union Avenue, Park Street, the street just east of the development running north-south. The area shown in yellow is currently the proposed layout design of the sidewalk for this development. We're looking to take bits here in early March. There was a suggestion to add sidewalk on both sides of Campus Drive which serves this particular property. That's illustrated in the blue line right now. That is currently not part of this proposal for this development. So, I'm, my request is to get council's direction of to A, leave the proposed plans as is, the sidewalk shown in the yellow locations on the map, or B, would be to keep the existing sidewalk, but adding additional sidewalk on Campus Drive, which is indicated on the blue in color.
Thank you, Brian. So... So I guess it's up to the council, we can discuss if someone likes to offer a motion.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Motion to, you want the sidewalk on both, or you want the one?
I want the one.
You want the yellow?
I'm going with yellow.
Yellow, okay. So there's a motion to, you know, it does serve the neighborhood, obviously, it's across the street. I mean, there is, you know, I'm a big proponent of having as many sidewalks as we can, but if we do look at the map, we do have access to the, you know, all the lots there have access to a sidewalk. And you made your point the other day about more sidewalk to shovel for somebody, that I didn't think about that, too. Scott?
I've made the point that I'd like to see the sidewalks on both sides going forward, so I'm going to stick with that. So I'll be voting no, but that's how I'll approach it.
Sure.
Could we perhaps do compromise and do a sidewalk on one side and a footpath on the other side?
So, so we have a motion to direct the city staff to continue with the sidewalk on one side of the street. Question, Brian, is this slightly different than what we saw on Wednesday morning, or is the amount, the amount seems to be significantly less if I'm reading that right?
Now, this amount, and I do have a copy here, there was a handout.
Yep.
It was an exhibit generated from a plan drawing grading plan. I know it's very busy, for lack of a better term, so I made this, but yes, same amount shown, locations described.
Got it, okay. For some reason, okay, it looks a little different to me, but I trust that it's, I trust, yeah, it's the same. So we have a motion adopting the sidewalk, or directing city staff to continue with sidewalk on one side, everyone clear? One, yes.
Just to make the point, this is our shot at it. It's not like we will come back 50 years from now and add a sidewalk. So if there's going to be a sidewalk there, it's got to get in the initial plan, and it just seems like it would be best to have sidewalk on both sides. There's been conversations about this going back and forth for many things that I've heard, so I better throw my two cents in there.
I appreciate it, Scott, I really do.
If this fails, then we can vote to go ahead with two.
Not to encourage anyone how to vote, but, right? All right, we have a motion, and a second on the floor. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
We have two no votes, the motion carries, so staff has their direction. Thanks.
Thank you.
Scott and Caroline, and thanks, Brian, for that. So we can disagree but not be disagreeable, right? That's important.
We can agree to disagree.
There you go. Item number two is an update on the Aquatics Center, and we'll call on Andrew Brumstad.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, councilmembers. This item was a little bit late, so I apologize for that. It's on your desks this evening. I did not have it at the time of sending the packet out, but it is a time essential item, so I do hope we can get some direction this evening. As you recall, back in October, the city hired Boltman Mink to review the previous work done by US Aquatics, and as a result of that review, they found that the estimated project costs in the US Aquatics report was significantly low. That was related to the design that they put forward that we all have seen many times. They also found that revenues within the operations budget were overstated and expenditures were understated. So a little bit of a dilemma, quite frankly, and as a result of that, the committee has been discussing with Boltman Mink how we may be able to identify a path going forward. If you recall, the state legislature authorized the city of Fergus Falls to put it on the ballot for a local option sales tax at the next general election, and that authorization allowed for us to collect up to 7.8 million dollars through a sales tax. The project that was designed by US Aquatics is now believed to cost about 12.6 million dollars, so a significant gap between what our authorization is and what the estimated cost would be. So in consultation with Boltman Mink and the subconsultants, we have identified another option to try to figure out what the right size of this aquatic center is, and hopefully still be able to get before the voters in November. And that's to look at three separate options. One, they're proposing that they would provide a layout and a design that would fit that 7.8 million dollar budget. They are telling us that we're probably going to be underwhelmed by what the 7.8 million dollars will get us. That's something I think we need to see and make the decision on. Option two would be finding a design that's somewhere in the nine to 11 million dollar range, which is between the authorization we currently have and this, what Boltman Mink would suggest is big project for Fergus Falls that was previously designed by US Aquatics. And then option three is to show that original design that is estimated to cost 12.6 million. So I say time is of the essence for the simple fact that if we're going to ask the legislature for more than the 7.8 million dollar authorization that we currently have, we're going to have to do that during this session. This session is underway, and the clock is ticking. So if the council wants to proceed in this direction, Boltman Mink has indicated they would work as fast as possible to allow us time to go back to the legislature to get additional authorization if the council and the committee determine that's the direction we want to go, and that's the appropriate option that we want to move forward with. We have given the Chair of the Tax Committee in the House a heads-up that we have a little bit of a dilemma on our hands as it relates to this, and he indicated that other cities are experiencing similar challenges because of inflation and because of the uncertainty of the building climate right now. So they wouldn't be surprised to see us and others coming back looking for additional authorization. So that's what we're looking at doing. Once this work is concluded and we hone in on one of these three options, if the council decides to proceed, this would essentially give us everything we need to get to ballot question in November. It would have all the renderings, it would have all the additional information, factual information, operating costs, budgeting, all those, all those things that we can provide to the voters so they can make sound decisions if this does appear on the ballot. So now, here's the fun part. The proposal is 37,135, so it's not a cheap price tag, but it is heavy lifting. They're essentially starting over and looking at two new options that weren't previously under consideration, and then the third option, of course, will be less of a lift because a lot of the work has been done. So really, I think the council has to decide if they want to continue down this road. If so, I would suggest that this is probably a necessary cost to do our due diligence to get this in front of the voters in November, and if not, quite frankly, there's, I don't know if there's a good path forward to have this on the ballot in November. So I guess that's the decision we need to make. I don't know if any of the folks on the committee want to add anything, there's a lot of folks that have spent a lot of time and energy and effort on this, and, you know, this is really just the next step to try to have this successfully on the ballot.
Question, have they done anything with donations? Are you looking at raising money through donations for the Aquatics Center?
I could answer that, Mr. Fish, if you. You know, in the, in the previous proposal before we came before the council, there was a component of fundraising. In that 7.8 million, a portion of that was going to be on the group to fundraise. We haven't, so to speak, put boots on the ground, because we, you know, we got approval through the council to move forward with that, and then with the timing lapse with COVID and everything, we wanted to go back out and reassure the numbers, and here they are before us tonight, which are drastically different. So, you know, our goal was to have a defined plan, project number, and then, you know, now essentially through the summer, start, start that campaign. So there's always been a component of our project to fundraise, and that still is there, but to the tune of the numbers we're talking from a difference, to keep their existing project at 12-point, 12-point set, I mean, that's, we were never planning on fundraising that gap. So, you know, obviously, I think, I'm going to admit, I haven't been to the last couple aquatic meetings, I've been tied up with other stuff. So, you know, I can't speak for the entirety of that conversation, but it's, it's rather frustrating just personally with much time and effort we've put into this, and we, you know, spent money on a consultant that gave us what we wanted and needed to go to the voters, and we thought we had it. And, you know, obviously with inflation and things, but, you know, these numbers are drastically different than kind of the, the original design. So I don't know if frustrated is the right word, but it is where we're at, and, you know, I think the committee needs to know where the council lies, so we can, I think we still want a plan going forward, but what that looks like, I don't know. So, you know, we want to hear your feedback from the council and...
Did, did Boltman Mink do the original estimate on it?
No.
That was the Aquatics?
US Aquatics did it.
US Aquatics did that?
Tom?
Yeah, that's a, it's a, it's a tough question. It, I didn't, I didn't know that COVID would ruin anything, but it, you know, this is, this is one of the, when I, you know, when I go door knocking, I mean, this is when I go to a house that has young children, I mean, I just would always hear, hey, what are the plans to get a water park? And so I know it's very important to a lot of our citizens, it's just a question of how important is it? You know, it's like, to kind of echo what Justin said, I mean, it's, it's really unfortunate now to have to pay that much more for the same thing, but that's the construction industry these days. So Andrew, for, I mean, do we, do we have to make a decision on this tonight? I mean, what happens if we were to table this so that we can have some, a chance to hear from taxpayers and talk with, you know, interested parties and the like?
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Ruffer, I don't want you guys to make a decision if you're not comfortable in doing so, but the, it's going to take probably a minimum of six weeks to complete the work that's proposed in this scope. And if we were to add two more weeks to wait to the next council meeting, we're looking at probably being in about week nine of a 15-week legislative session, and I don't know off the top of my head when the introduction deadline is for new bills, but it's going to be somewhere in that timeline. So if we determine, now, if the council wants to say, we're going to stick to the 7.8 million dollars, go figure out what that looks like, that's what we're willing to do, then timing isn't as big of an issue because we have until November, you know, or, you know, midsummer to get the ballot question sorted out. But if there's any component of additional legislative approval, that's where time is of the essence, because if we miss this legislative session, you're now looking at the next general election, which is 2024, and you're going to look at adding how much more costs.
But just to be clarified, but in order to give the voters, you know, a clear picture of what they're voting on, we'd have to do this work because we've, or, correct me if I'm wrong, because we've determined that USA Aquatics, their, their numbers are just not accurate for us to feel comfortable going to the voters?
We'd have to do some level of work. If the direction was, we're sticking to 7.8 million dollars, this proposal would be smaller, because then we would hone in on that one option.
So my follow-up question is, so if we approve, if we approve this tonight, you know, obviously eventually, we'll hopefully be building an aquatic center, and this is just going to give us a better idea of what we would be looking at down the road. So, I mean, this is really some necessary work if we want to have the aquatic center, if we don't want to just cobble together a couple little things and call it good, you know, if we want to have a project we can be proud of, we would need to make this investment.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's accurate, and that's where we are. It pains me to say that, because we've already done this work, and it was, you know, not done well, unfortunately, but it is the investment we're going to have to make to get to that point. It's not, you know, it's not a huge pill to swallow if we're successful, because the funding source then is the sales tax, and we can cover these costs, but there's a risk here, if, if this doesn't proceed, we're spending just over 37,000 that would be gone, quite frankly, so.
Your Honor.
Yeah, Anthony.
I think it's, I think we also have to be real, realistic, I mean, it's now 12.6 million, that's the cost, and that's without, obviously, interest. We've just, earlier this evening, discussed about a franchise fee that, you know, we heard from the voters significantly in four days. So I think, you know, we, we should be mindful of that, and I think to kind of introduce this tonight and expect a decision on it tonight is actually unfair to, to the voters, because I think, you know, the general public will have something to say about a 12.6 million dollar aquatic center. And, you know, if we go ahead with this, you know, proposal tonight, and we're going to do that somewhat in a vacuum, you know, literally, I don't know how many people, I mean, we all had phone calls and we all had emails, you know, from Wednesday to today on something that technically was going to be 50 dollars. This is going to be significantly more. I think we do have a splash pad, you know, included in the downtown riverfront, you know, and if this rolled to another, another period, then maybe, you know, that's, it rolls, but I think it's, it's, it's hard to make a decision on this tonight, especially in, in the light of what's, what's gone on this evening, too. And then I would like to say, we're putting a lot of effort into the aquatic center, but I see nothing happening on DeLagoon Park. And I think, you know, as a city council, you know, we're basically, it looks like we're backing this project at the expanse of DeLagoon, and I'd ask staff, what have we, what proposals do we have on the docket for DeLagoon? Because that one is also on, on the ballot this, this November, and we should be seen to be equitable in, in the projects that we're supporting.
Yep, I'll answer that, Your Honor. Councilmember Hicks, I just want to be clear, I'm not proposing a 12.6 million dollar aquatic center, I don't think the committee is either, that's why we have to do additional work. So I just, I don't want that narrative to get twisted, because that's not accurate. But the difference between DeLagoon and the aquatic center is, the DeLagoon is existing, and so there's not as much due diligence that has to be done on the front end, because we know what's there, we know what the assets are, and we're actually in the process right now of identifying the firm that did the master plan on the DeLagoon campground, and frankly, we learned last week that that particular firm is no longer, so we're trying to figure out where those individuals went, and Guy's actively tracking that down so we can update those numbers, get a feel for that. But the timeline on that is just, is simpler for us, simply because it's existing, it's an existing asset, and we're just making upgrades and/or improvements to an existing asset. So it's, it's not creating something from scratch, we've already got that planning work done, and we're giving it the attention it deserves, it's just not going to be such a drawn-out process.
Question for, in talking with Chair of the Tax Committee, has it been discussed, when the legislature gives us approval at a certain level, we don't have to go up to that number, correct? Like, that's, that's the ceiling, but it's, that's the cap. So it, it, you know, as, as I think everyone's saying, let's, this is a big decision, we want to make the right decision, and we don't want to just jump into anything. Can we, you know, concurrently pursue potentially cost increase?
Ask for 12 million?
Ask for more, and then we don't have to make that decision to the voters as we kind of sort through this information? Do you see where I'm?
Yeah, we certainly could. That's the direction the council wants to go, that, that's an option. And when asked where we came up with that number, we'd have to just, you know, tell the story, I guess.
And maybe sometime between now and, and the end of the session, we do engage this, I don't know, but it gives people, the council, a little bit more time to at least digest and consider. Yeah, Jim?
If we went to that 12 million, isn't that what the number would be on the ballot, though, also?
No, you get to decide your ballot question.
Okay.
So, all right, so it could be up to that amount, but ultimately, a ballot question would have to be approved by the council.
So it'd just give us the opportunity to...
Yep.
Scott?
And we already have in hand approval to ask for 7.8 million, correct? And that wouldn't be eliminated by asking for more?
No.
So we could go and ask for more, and if it's not authorized, we've still got the authorization in hand to do a 7.8 million dollar project, and we would then have to choose to either go ahead with that or not.
Yeah, that's correct. The trouble is, we just can't tell anyone what a 7.8 million dollar project looks like.
Or a 12 million.
We don't have means.
But it does give the council more time to digest and to think through this, and what, how much they want to invest on the front end.
Yeah.
How much detail the voters need, because the voters obviously need detailed vote, right?
The timing is related to the legislature, so if there's a comfort level from the council to just proceed with, you know, the, the most expensive option in terms of legislative approval, and then back down from there, I think that's totally fine, and we can start that process now. I think that's a good compromise.
Will we make a motion to, towards that effect? Someone like to offer that, that we at least start that process if we don't get...
Call for that.
Thank you. Scott, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim.
I just had a comment. I don't know if Bridgette has any feedback from the committee. You know, the way I see this, you know, we, as a committee at the 7.8, we thought we were getting, you know, this plan. Now that's drastically changed. I don't know, in my opinion, and Bridgette, if you want to speak to this, I don't know if 12.4 is really like, you know, we want to have a successful project, right? For the community, and we want it to go forward. I don't know if I see that number going forward. I think that's a huge ask, and I don't know what, I'm on the committee, so I should know this, but I haven't attended the last few meetings. I don't know what, I'm like, I would like us to get direction from the council, or I should say, committee give the council direction of what they want. If we're comfortable with the 7.8, then we just got to get a picture of what that looks like so we can go to the voters. Or if the committee says, no, we're more comfortable in the nine to 11 space, then we need to get a drawing from this company to give us what that is. I don't think the current, my opinion, the current proposal we have, the 12.6, I just don't know how successful we'd be, especially in the climate we're in. We talked about the franchise fee and everything else. I think, you know, we got to be realistic, and I hate to pare it back, but I mean, that's a big pill to swallow, and that's quite a few years on the sales tax for other projects potentially not going forward. So what's the feedback from?
Good evening, Bridgette.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers.
Not to put you on the spot.
No, it's okay. I think just from being at the last couple of meetings, there's just a lot of factors that have happened, you know, over the last couple of years. So it was COVID delayed us, is one. Inflation happened, construction costs have skyrocketed, and the second consultant is having some differing opinions about how much this costs and what scope our city really needs for a project or a pool to be successful. So there's so many variables. What the committees, where the committee sits right now, is that I can't go knock on a door and say, please vote yes for an aquatic center in our town because we don't have an accurate project or cost today. So that's what this consultant, what I believe needs to happen before we can vote on something because to Justin's councilmember's arnessen's point, we want this to pass, too. And so we can't go to voters on a sales tax and say, will you please vote yes for a $12.6 million project? Is that the best way to get this done? And we don't know what that looks like right now. So there, again, is some consultant work that has to happen, I think, before we can go forward.
Thanks, Bridgette. I do think that if we at least started the work with the legislator, knowing that we potentially could have an increase, that's not going to hurt as the council works with the committee to figure out what that number is. Because if we could narrow that down to say, this is where we feel, this is the absolute tops we feel comfortable going with to have a successful project, then that's going to probably reduce the scope of that work that they're going to need to do as well, too. If we're talking nine million, for example, that's going to narrow their?
Committee didn't leave the meeting, everyone in agreement, city staff, committee members leaving, going, we want to ask the voters for $13 million. We felt that both the legislature, given the couple of years in inflation and construction costs, and our community may be able to stomach a compromise of nine to 10, just given that 7.8 was several years ago.
Sure. Bill?
And when we come up with the numbers of what would go in that legislative ask, so the 12.6 is the project, right? So we would have to come up with a calculation, what would the interest on the bonds be on top of that? So just so you're aware, what would go to the legislature would be something in addition to 12.6. We need to calculate what that would be, too.
We also would have to include contingency, because that does not include project contingency.
Yep.
But it seems to me, at this point, let's not worry about the timeline of the legislature. If we can get that passed, let's do the work here because this is our community. I think this body and the work of the committee is the one that's going to decide what is the actual project that we need to, let's not rush this to get it to the legislator that's not the right project. That would be my thoughts, right? Let's get the authorization for them so we can do the work here to make sure we have the right project.
I just have a comment, and that's, I think that's fine if we go to legislature first, but if I remember correctly, we were ready to start rolling a week before everything shut down for COVID because our last committee meeting, we were scrambling to find a location that would still allow us to meet there. The very next week, it closed, everything closed down. So we had a project, we had committees within the, we had subcommittees within the committee to start fundraising, to start a vote yes campaign. We were ready to roll for November, and that was March 14th of 2020. So we are coming up on a timeline as well. So that's why I feel like a decision soon needs to be made about the scope of this project if the committee is going to be able to get out and talk to the voters about what this project is. So I don't think we can sit on this for too long.
Sure. Point taken.
I think, I think we have a motion. I would like us to, in my opinion, I think option three, as presented, the original design, as Bridgette said, is probably not realistic from both concessions that we'd be willing as a committee. I like option two because it gives us some flexibility to go to and have, going to the state, and if we can get modified sales tax, that'd be great. If not, we at least have 7.8, and then the committee's got some fundraising to do for the difference in the gap, and I think that is at least a little more easily to bite off than, you know, four and a half million dollars. So if we went with option two, I think we could probably reduce that cost to 37,135, which gives us, I think, both paths of potentially having a successful project, having to pare it back a little bit, but also maybe having a bigger fundraising component for this to go forward, assuming the legislator doesn't budge on the 7.8. Then we could still move forward, and we just have to fundraise, you know, more, or make more concessions to the design. But I think that gives us a lower cost to Boltman Mink, gets us the design, and we can run parallel with the state. I just don't think the 12.6 makes sense to go and ask for that big of a request. That's just my opinion.
Sure. And that would seem to be the bulk of this proposal, too, the brand-new 12.6.
Um, maybe not. Maybe nine to 11.
That's the one that the work is with. Okay. You don't have that number, though, for the proposal.
We should ask Bill to come, not necessarily tonight, because he doesn't have his calculated within, but, I mean, we also need to kind of have an understanding of, like, if we're going to, if you're going to look at like 10 million or 11 million, what the interest is, because obviously, you've got to go to legislator. I mean, that's included in the 7.8. So you need to have that kind of number in mind, because?
We need to know what, and again, we would look at, here's the DeLagoon project estimate with interest, here's this project with interest, what was the sales tax fund at $1.3 million a year, and you kind of back into the number of years, that's how we kind of did the other one. So, you know, here's the max sales tax we'd ask to collect for the max years, and?
Sure.
And I think we need to know that to make a decision, too.
So we have multiple things going on here. So we have a motion to at least start the process with our, with our people in St. Paul to, you know, start the process of letting them know we're going to ask for an increase, potentially ask for an increase to allow us to make the decision. So that's the motion that's on the floor. Then, secondly, we'll vote on that, but then I think you have a motion to just pare this down to option two is what I heard. So first motion is to have staff continue to work with representatives in St. Paul, lay in the groundwork for a potential ask for an increase in the sales tax for the Aquatic Center. All favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign?
Aye.
Second, that motion carries. Second, Justin, did you want?
I'd like to make a motion that we go to Boltman Mink with option two to design a midsize option with a budget between nine and 11 million, so we have an understanding of the scope of the project we could have in the design, assuming we were successful in changing the sales tax, or the other component would be additional fundraising to proceed with the project.
Would that mean that we'd come back in two weeks with what that proposal would be from Boltman Mink? Is that what?
I don't know how long it takes them to pare it back and give us the design, but?
Yeah, they'll be able to give it to us quickly. We'll present it at the committee in the whole meeting next week or whenever that is, but, and then be ready for action.
Okay.
I'll second.
So there's motion and second. Clear on that motion? Yeah, Scott?
They didn't give us a price for what it would be to just do one option, but maybe it'll be 20,000, maybe it'll be something more or less than that. Do we need to pick a number, or are we going to just let them tell us?
I guess my understanding would be saying yes to this motion would have them come back with a number for option two. You're not, you're not voting on option two, but of that 37,135, they'd have to come back with what it would cost just to give us that. This includes all three.
You'll see a revised proposal then at the committee in the whole next week, which would tell you exactly what it will cost for them to do the work related to just option two.
But we won't have the rendering, I can't imagine, and for what option two is.
No.
That's what the work to do.
Everyone clear on that motion? So I'm in favor of that motion to ask Boltman Mink to focus in on option number two and bring that back to the next committee hall, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign?
Aye.
That motion carries as well. And then I think the third thing was just that as we go through all these numbers, we just ask our finance director to, you know, let us know, have the numbers, which obviously we will, that's going to be part of the process.
Yeah, we'll have to, next committee, the whole, we'll have to give you some of that approach.
There isn't enough in the whip store to fund it.
All right. Okay. Everyone good on that topic?
Copy.
There's no new business. Under announcements, there are two announcements this evening. Public Works Director Guy Taylor has an announcement.
Not so much an announcement, but an update. We unfortunately had some idle hands do some vandalism in a couple warming houses. We put significant money into both warming houses in the past couple of years. Channing Warming House hadn't been open for 10 years. We put new heater, new furnace, and water heater, and flooring, new siding, and then we had to shut it down for a couple of weeks because of some vandalism. Lake Alice, we put in new flooring, new doors, some siding. So it's just unfortunate that some idle hands made the warming houses to be shut down for a couple of weeks, and they are now both repaired. And we're waiting on a sink for the Lake Alice one, but that'll be coming in soon, and we'll have it fully operational here shortly.
Thanks for your work on that, Guy. I know that firsthand that those warming houses are much appreciated by the people.
Do we have any security cameras on those?
No, we don't. We're going to look at that. I was going to mention also, we have in the past staffed the warming houses. We just unfortunately did not receive any applicants for those positions this fall, so, signing the times, yeah.
Thank you, Guy. Thank you, Guy. We also have an update announcement from Chief Macau. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So just to give a good acknowledgement to our residents that have taken care of the hydrants in their neighborhoods, with this year's snowfall, it's been somewhat unprecedented just because we haven't had this much snow in recent years. So it really helped illustrate the need for those hydrant heroes out there. We put a little plug out on our Facebook page probably about a month ago, and with good results, it gained some traction that way. Then also, to Councilmember Fish's, you know, ask that those that have hydrants in your neighborhood that have not been shoveled, you know, if you can help a neighbor out or if you're capable for the residents here just to get out and shovel, and then also if you do need assistance, you can give the fire station a call. We can't necessarily get out to all of them right away, but as our crews come in for training, then also we do send them out to look at some of the trouble spots in town that typically do fill in with snow. So, so again, a good shout out to those that have done it. Thank you very much. And then if you are troubled at getting one opened up or see something, do let us know as well.
Thanks, Chief.
And you stop and shovel them when you see them, right, Chief?
I do. And our crews have as well, so.
Not in front of his house, though. Leave that.
I don't have one.
All right.
I'm not about to say nothing more.
And with that, we are adjourned.